Good evening, welcome to the September 4th Larkspur City Council. It is 6:30 and Allison, may we please have a roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Merrill?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chief?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here, thank you Allison. If you're able to, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Public comment, do we have any public comment that is not on the agenda tonight? Hi Barbara.
Hi everyone. So, I'm Barbara Friday, 66 Meadowwood. I'm here in my capacity as President of the Friendsville Library for the last two years and a Larkspur resident and library user for 33 years. So it's come to my attention that our distinguished library director Janice Aiko is resigning due to health issues at the end of September. It's been my privilege to work supporting Janice who in her three-year tenure here has made our library stronger, more vital, and more a part, a daily part of many people's lives. You've heard from us about the marked increase in the number and quality of library programs, as well as the corresponding increase in library usage. By every measure, Janice and her staff have built a city library of which each of us, council members, city staff, and city residents can be proud. Indeed, Janice follows in a tradition of dedicated library professionals who've served the Larkspur community. With such distinction, we've been very fortunate to have Janice and her predecessor Frances steward our library through challenging and changing times. We citizens and I, as a regular library user, are profoundly grateful. Yet, as a citizen who devotes my time and energies to making the Larkspur library the best that it can be, I come before you to express my concern. I'm here tonight to emphasize the importance of finding a qualified, experienced, and dedicated library director to replace Janice promptly. I believe that this process should be as in-depth and inclusive as when Janice was identified and hired. The process should include major stakeholders like representatives from the Friends, the LLC Foundation, the Library Board of Trustees, and Larkspur Library Foundation. It should also include other library professionals from throughout the county, as it did during Janice's successful hiring process. It's important that this process be transparent to the community and result in a similarly qualified professional. By the way, there is also a significant loss in the staff occurring at the same time. This library professional provides technical services and is an increasingly important position within our library community. In summary, I'm drawing your attention to the fact that our library needs a qualified and committed library director of the standards with which we've been served by Janice and Frances, and that the hiring process needs to proceed promptly and include major stakeholders. Now more than ever in our society and indeed our town, services of the highest quality must serve all individuals regardless of affluence or lack thereof, age or youth, social, educational, or cultural background. There is no time to delay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Barbara. Is there anyone else? Hi Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe Jennings from the Larkspur Library Community Center Foundation. I live at 208 Montavista. I'm the president. So since August 14th, when we worked with the council on the workshop on the unfunded CIP, there have been developments that we wanted to keep you appraised of. We have started the process of meeting with supporters and donors, and we had our first meeting this week. We have more scheduled for the coming weeks. The first meeting had over 20 people, which is a good sign. As you know, our goal is to raise the funds and build a modern and safe library as quickly as possible, and then put in place the financial independence to sustain it. Our concerns that we stated on the August 14th meeting was as a result of our feasibility study. We believe that we need a significant contribution from the city to build the city library. The major donors think we can do a 60-40 deal, but we cannot make it all with private funds. And secondly, we should focus on a smaller project that we can get done, and that public safety, access, parking, and available space at City Hall are all compelling arguments for moving now. And frankly, the lack of an established donor base is our greatest impediment. So we've recommended to you all that we focus on building a library at the Commons, funding it at around a $12.5 million first phase, 60% or $7.5 million from the city, $5 million from the foundation, and make it a modern and safe library with community meeting rooms, improved parking and access. What we asked for was that there be a robust process to look at public bonds, partnerships with government agencies, partnerships with private developers, and other funding sources. And we understand that the city's in position to send out an architectural RFP and a developer RFQ by the end of this month, end of September, and we'd like to just get a schedule established for when these other funding options will come to the table so we can do an apples-to-apples comparison. Because then we can raise funds against that schedule and the outcome of that meeting. In addition, I just wanted to let you know that we're about to sign the contract to put the sign up at the property, and it should be going up later this month. So thank you very much.
Thank you Joe. Nice report. Anyone else? All right, I see none. Bring it back to the dais. I see we don't have any presentation or proclamations, so approval of the consent calendar. Any council members want to pull anything or ask questions about the consent calendar? Nope, I see none. I'm going to go to the public. Anybody from the public want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Bring it back. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? I see none. Great, thank you. So now we move on to the City Manager's Report. Dan Schwartz.
Well, Madam Mayor, tonight I'm actually going to defer my report to others. First, I'm going to do an introduction and then defer to the mayor, and I'd like to introduce our new city clerk, Allison Fullis, who's joining us for the first meeting.
Yay Allison!
Allison comes to us after having served as the Belvedere Clerk for several years. And it's been our practice that we started with our last city clerk, that the mayor does the oath of office for the city clerk. So it'd be my pleasure to defer to you, Madam Mayor, so that you can administer the oath of office to Allison.
It's my honor. Dan, may I use your mic? Thanks. Okay, Allison, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Allison Fullis...
I, Allison Fullis...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And to the Constitution of the State of California...
And to the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Congratulations Allison. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And now I'd like to invite Assistant to the City Manager Shannon O'Hare to introduce a special guest that I would like to have do a presentation for you, so I'm going to turn it over to Shannon.
Great, so I'm going to announce, I'm not actually going to say much myself, but I'm going to announce our summer intern, Julia Dobirstein. I'll let her talk about herself because one of the most important skills you can learn as an intern is as long as you're in the workforce, you're going to have to talk about yourself a lot, and you should be comfortable doing so and bragging about yourself. She's been with us all summer, working out of the City Manager's Office, but it's really touched upon a lot of departments, and she'll go over that and a number of projects she's done with that. She's done everything from helping us with our communications, updating the website, working with planning and surveying what other cities are doing, and giving us recommendations of things we perhaps should be doing or ought not to be doing. And she's really brought both a great analytical skill set and a solid baseline, as well as a fresh set of eyes as a resident of Larkspur, as a community member, for some of these things she thinks that we may be able to do and kind of enhance our services as a city. So with that, I'll let her give her presentation about what she's been working on for the summer.
Hi, my name's Julia Dobirstein, and I am 20 years old, and I'm going into my junior year at the University of Oregon. Next week, I'm actually going to study abroad in Exeter, England for three months, and I've lived in Larkspur my whole life, so getting this internship was a really great experience, especially because I'm familiar with the town. So, for what I did this summer, I reviewed the accuracy of the city's building plans that were digitized. I researched other city methods for listing their current building projects, and recommended options for updating Larkspurs. I familiarized myself with the city's website analytics.
Oops. Oh, the PowerPoint always does this.
Sorry.
Here it comes.
Thank you. I went through the city's website to make sure that everything is up to date. I attended a Marin Climate and Energy Partnership meeting. I met with staff members to understand their roles. I wrote a press release for the recently hired city clerk. And for what I learned, I learned how to update and add links to different pages on a website. I learned how to comprehend and utilize a website's analytics. I learned how to navigate the program that Larkspur uses to manage its records. I learned how to use different tools and tricks in programs like Excel and Adobe Reader. And I reviewed documents relating to the future Larkspur Library and Community Center and updated websites so that the documents are more easily accessible.
Great. Julia, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you did for Larkspur this summer.
Thank you.
I hope you enjoyed yourself.
I really did.
It seemed like you did.
Yes.
And I kept hearing from not only the staff, but the city manager, how lucky and fortunate we were to have you as an intern.
Thank you.
So hopefully you'll come back and do it again.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
I'll be around.
Yeah. Safe travels.
Julia, are you interested in public service on a city or state level?
I'm, this was a good internship for me, I'd say, because I'm trying to understand if I want to go into public or private. So I'm still learning, but I'm appreciative that I got to see what it's like to work in the public. Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again Julia. Nice report, nicely done. Karen, you should be proud. Dan, anything else you want to add to your report?
That's it.
Okay. Any council members or reports or comments? All right, I have one announcement. The Community Media Center of Marin invites you to the 10th anniversary. Block party and open house is on September the 8th. It's a Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00. Hopefully you can come. They've got food, truck, live music by The Seven Suns and Cubed, and Ruffles, and lots more. So if you're free, please join in on that. All right, we'll move on. We'll move on to public hearing. 7.1, we're going to introduce first reading of ordinances, amending Title V of the Larkspur Municipal Code, add new chapter 5.52, rent registry, 5.54, rental housing dispute resolution, and 5.56, just cause eviction. So we're going to have a staff report, please, and then we'll open it to the public. Hi Neil.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'd like to draw your attention to, I believe there are three items of late mail on your dais that has come to us, one just right before the meeting. Okay, to give you some background, in July, the City Council held a study session on renters' protections with an emphasis on mobile home tenancy. In that workshop study session, staff included information on a variety of other policies and programs that some of our local communities are engaging in to address the challenge for the rental housing market and challenge for renters, and to provide some level of protection in general. The discussion was primarily on rent control or rent stabilization, but we did talk about other more moderated measures such as mandatory mediation and just cause eviction. After discussing the item, hearing from the public, and asking questions of staff and the city attorney, the council directed staff to return to you with policies to address the topics of mandatory mediation, just cause eviction, and a rental registry to help the city track the rental market. And in that meeting, staff also agreed to return with a more in-depth discussion on rent stabilization at a later date. So staff has worked with the city attorney to prepare three ordinances addressing the topics of rental registry, rental housing dispute resolution, which is the more formal term for mandatory mediation, and just cause evictions. These are ordinances largely based and worked around what has been adopted in San Rafael, Marin County, and Fairfax. So the rent registry does apply to all types of rentals, and it is a program that would encourage anybody renting and getting business licenses for rental units in the city to fill out additional forms and information on their rental units. And through time, the city would develop kind of a database to help inform about the rental market. The rental housing dispute resolution, this is essentially mandatory mediation for any rental increase of more than 5% over a 12-month period. This is mediation. It's agreement or decision is not required, and it is just a opportunity for discussion to help a tenant and landlord resolve any outstanding issues or misunderstandings. However, failure to participate can be identified as a violation because it is mandatory participation. We would like to note that the Marin County's DA's office has been performing mediation services for the county, and has agreed also to be doing that for the city of San Rafael and for Fairfax. When we were discussing this at the study session, the question of whether or not mandatory arbitration would be an option for, as opposed to simply mediation, we took that into consideration. We have reviewed that with the city attorney's office. And the conclusion is because arbitration is legally binding, it really becomes a whole different approach than mediation. Essentially, it's akin to rent control, just simply on a case-by-case basis. So there are some legal issues that would really have to be pursued if we were going in that direction, and you're probably better off really just going towards a rent stabilization ordinance as opposed to mandatory arbitration. And if you have further questions on that, I think from the legal perspective, Sky could probably provide a little more framework for you. And the just cause eviction, that is fairly straightforward. It simply identifies that there must be cause to evict, and it provides the fixed requirement for notification, and it identifies the general basis for cause. Now, as we outlined in the staff report, there are a few direct causes, direct costs for these programs. Most of these can be administered and really just require some administrative resources and probably some legal support here and there. We would be creating forms, doing public outreach, tracking, enforcement, and reporting to the council. Now, there is some direct cost for mediation services. As I mentioned, the Marin County District Attorney's Office can perform that at an estimate of about $600 for a mediation session, and we could estimate that would go from anywhere to four to six a year for a community like Larkspur. But really, the demand is unknown. This is a very new sort of program for the community, so we're uncertain how much that would be coming to play. So with that, we have prepared three different ordinances, each addressing the various topics, so the council may choose to adopt one or all, or continue one or all. And typically, we bring ordinances to you with a recommendation of making a motion to take first reading and move to adopt second reading. And while we typically do that, we do want to make the council aware that as of last week, the governor really took a very strong position in favor of AB 1492...
82.
Which is a statewide rent control stabilization bill that also includes some provisions for just cause. When we were first discussing this topic about two months ago, that bill was really stagnating in committee, and it did not, there was no clarity as to whether it was moving forward. As of last week, it seems as though the bill has really picked up steam and picked up some life. So it's possible that the state will be applying a statewide sort of rent control or rent stabilization law that is similar to others we've seen in some communities, as well as just cause. So it's something to keep in mind as we discuss this topic. And do you have any questions of staff?
Oh, sorry. A couple of housekeeping items. We've agendized this in a way to sort of talk about all three topics as you desire, but should you move forward, I would recommend individual motions about each ordinance. Also, we often put numbers on the ordinances. We haven't here because we sort of brought this without any clear indication from the council where you're going with these different ordinances. So we didn't want to number them unless you move them through first reading, and then we'll number the ones that you, if you choose to move any of them forward.
Okay. I have a quick question for Dan or Sky. To change an ordinance that these pass tonight, and then it passes in 14 days, the 1482, is it easy enough to add to ordinances and make the changes?
Well, if the state law passes after we've passed something, then it becomes our job to see if we need to do any reconciliation. The way that law's written, it trumps local law unless there's a stronger local provision, so we would have to analyze whether there was any local provision that was stronger than what had been put in place by state law, and then we'd bring you cleanup about it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan.
Further in reference to that, and maybe Sky can answer it, as of Friday, it's moved a lot further, and then as of today, they published even additional agreed-upon amendments. And I did a lot of research on this because I think we may be getting ahead of ourselves if this state law is going to be something completely that we're going to have to follow. And everything I saw was that by the 13th, which is next Friday, it looks like it's scheduled to pass. Have you seen anything else by the league or from your sources?
No, I think that's a fair summary. I mean, I checked towards the end of the day and actually hadn't seen the amendments yet, but other than having read an article that there was agreement to change the formula for allowable rent increases to 5%.
To 5% rather than 7.5?
Seven, yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I think that it's a fair summary that at this point, assuming that it can move its way through the legislature during the remainder of the session, it's likely to be passed and signed by the governor.
And it also includes a whole provision of just cause evictions...
Right.
Which is similar to what we're looking at.
And that's what Dan was referring to...
Yeah.
Is that the way it's written, they have allowed for the continuation of local regulation of the same topic, but basically, as currently written, the last time I checked it, it basically said that the local version had to be stronger than the state version. So as Dan said, if it passes and the council moves the just cause eviction ordinance forward, we'd have to do a side-by-side comparison and see whether or not the state law applies or the ordinance applies. But I mean, there's likely to be overlap...
Right.
Between the two, and whichever one is stronger on any provision is the one that's going to prevail.
So for example, when I read it, I didn't see anything about a rental registry, although... So if we decide to put in a rental registry, that would be an additional layer on top of, let's say, AB 1482 passes? That would be our local control of adding an additional thing?
Yeah, so each of the three ordinances operates somewhat independently. I mean, I think that the view of a lot of practitioners in this area is that just cause and the mandatory mediation work together, that you'd want to have both in place, but some cities have opted to only have one or the other.
Okay.
So they could potentially operate independently. The rental registry is completely, I mean, it's obviously interrelated, but legally it can operate to do information gathering without either of the other two ordinances being in place, and the state law that's being proposed has no rent registry components to it currently.
Can I ask one last question on this one?
Of course, Karen.
Because I was doing a lot... There was another piece that I read, I think it was in the LA Times, about some legislation, or not legislation, but a proposition to go on the ballot in March 2020, that if this doesn't pass, meaning AB 1482, there's already signatures out to get a new proposition that would be stricter even than 1482.
Yeah, I have not seen anything about the text of it, but I've read similar articles.
Okay.
There's basically, what I had seen it referred to as is another Acosta Hawkins repeal slash amendment initiative, but I haven't seen the text of it.
Yeah, so a lot of moving parts right now that are on the state level that we are going to be held accountable for.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
How about if we do this? How about if we, any more questions about the state? Okay.
Well, I have some questions for Sky.
I'm just going to start with the rent registration and then go on, rent registry, and go on to the other ordinances, but if you have questions, I was just going to take one ordinance at a time.
Yeah, well, however you want to do it.
Yeah, go ahead. Ask, please ask.
Yeah, I just thought since we had, since Sky had...
No, absolutely. Please do.
And one of them is a question that, yeah, I'm sorry.
And one of them was just a question that Neil teed up, which is, just to get a better understanding for why we felt that arbitration was not a good way to go in the context of that particular ordinance.
Yeah, I think that there's, I think that there's a reasonable range of views about the topic. I think that the way that, because I talked about this with folks in my office, and I was ultimately persuaded by the view that if you're going to do, so just, I know you know this, but for the benefit, and I probably, the whole council knows this, but for the benefit of everybody, there's some distinctions between a mediation and an arbitration process. A mediation process, my characterization of it is, it's an attempt by the mediator to identify the strengths and weaknesses of each side's position, and try to find a middle ground between the two where they can compromise. An arbitration is more like a mini adjudication, where each side presents their case and the arbitrator basically issues a ruling on which side is right. It is not required for arbitration to be binding, but if it's not, then ultimately the arbitrator's decision has to go to somebody else to make a final decision, and that would probably mean coming back to the city council. So procedurally, I think we would want the arbitrators to actually issue a binding arbitration decision if the council was interested in moving in the direction of arbitration rather than mediation. And if the arbitrator is issuing a binding decision, the arbitrator is in effect making a decision about what the allowable rent would be, and that's why Neil characterized it the way we did, which is it's kind of a case-by-case rent control where you have an independent arbitrator making a decision about what the allowable rent increase is going to be. And we'd probably want to provide some additional objective standards about how to make that decision, and so to me, to us, it started looking more and more like a case-by-case rent control situation, which didn't seem to be the direction that the council was interested in heading in, so that was why we ultimately suggested that we provide that explanation, but maintain the mediation recommendation. The other thing is, I think that in my experience with this and those in my offices, that individual renters can often represent themselves well or find adequate assistance to participate in a mediation process. For arbitration, there's usually an expectation that each side's going to prepare some kind of a brief to submit to the arbitrator, which puts a much greater burden on the renters to find the resources to do that if they can't do it themselves, whereas a mediator is typically much more helpful in helping the two sides sort of identify their positions and try to reach a compromise. So that's sort of the totality of my thinking about it, but as I say, I think that there's a reasonable range of opinions about this.
Yeah, and I appreciate... Yeah, and I appreciate that because I have seen other jurisdictions go the arbitration route. And one of the reasons that they do that, and I think you alluded to this, is that the arbitration process, when it's binding, does provide some finality to the parties that a mediation might not provide. That said, mediations are usually easier, less burdensome on the parties in particular. In a situation like we'd be dealing with here, where there's kind of an imbalance in terms of the powers of the different parties coming to the process, it might be a more desirable way of doing it. But, you know, mediations often fail.
Yes.
And because they often fail, then you're kind of back to square one, and you've gone through, you know, a process, but it may not be a very satisfying outcome. And I worry sometimes in the context of mediation, people like to say, let's do mediation, but they're kind of gaming it, and they're kind of really saying, yeah, we'll do it, but it's, we're kind of going through the motions. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not expressing an opinion about whether which option is better than the others, but I want everyone to understand that there is a clear distinction between the mediation and arbitration approaches. And from a city's point of view, it actually might be, recognizing there may be some additional standards development that would be appropriate, but from the city's point of view, you know, getting the finality that an arbitration process can provide has its own appeal, quite honestly.
No, I think that's all, I agree with all of that. I think that, you know, I've gone through this with a few communities now, others in my office have, we've talked a fair amount. The success of the mediation programs that have been implemented was, in some degree, depend on who you talk to, but also depends on the community to some degree. And I think that, but I think that what a lot of them have found is that it was a reasonable first step to sort of gauge, to put in place a process to see whether or not something, something short of either arbitration or rent control could be effective in, you know, meeting the needs of property owners, but also the needs of renters. And then it leaves a lot of room to look at other options if they find over time that it's not being successful.
And it's kind of for those reasons that I'd be inclined to go that route. The second question that I had actually had to do with the last one, the just cause ordinance, just to get some clarity on what the remedies are. As I look at the ordinance, it's basically, you know, there, if there's the failure to provide a notice that meets the requirements for just cause, that creates a defense and an unlawful detainer action. But the overall structure, the remedies is, you're basically in an unlawful detainer setting. There's no additional administrative remedies that this ordinance would contemplate. And I was wondering, since that's the case, was there any thought given to that? For example, you know, a requirement that there be a mediation of a determination of whether there's just cause in a particular case?
We had not discussed it. It has, it's an issue that comes up a lot as these topics are addressed by city councils and in staff thinking about it. This is basically the standard approach that most cities have landed on. And as you know, we were following the examples of your neighboring communities that have gone in this direction. And that is pretty, and I can't off the top of my head think of a jurisdiction that has implemented kind of a mediation or other administrative process for this, but I might be missing one. But ultimately, the goal of, well, I shouldn't phrase it that way. I think the default framework for just cause eviction ordinances is to basically provide additional defenses for tenants in unlawful detainers situations, so that if they are being evicted and they go through the court process, they will have additional defenses available to them to say that they, that the landlord has not met the ordinance's requirements for the basis for eviction.
Okay, and that's fair enough. And again, I really just asked the question because I want to make sure it was clear to everyone on the council and the public that in this context at least, we're not talking about an alternative remedy. We're just talking about maybe a refinement to an existing remedy, which is the civil remedy of unlawful detainer.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Larry?
Yeah, this could be for Neil or Sky. You know, the utilization rate you have in estimating our cost, is that based on a number you're projecting for Larkspur based on what you think might happen here? Or is it from statistics for jurisdictions who have already implemented this?
Yeah, that was, excuse me. That was, is borrowed from San Rafael, statistics that they generated from other communities as a rate of how much or the percentage of how much this mediation has been utilized. So it's just generated from a little bit of sampling of other communities around the Bay Area.
Yeah, so it's under 1% according.
For now.
Yeah. Now, how many of those actually had a successful conclusion through mediation?
That's a perspective, isn't it? You're right.
Well, successful in a sense that people just don't walk away and then they just go with the original proposal or, you know, whatever.
Well, in terms of having or reaching sort of a stated agreement, I think the county has actually provided some numbers because they've been doing this since 2000, late 2017. And they've had over, I think, thirty, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers handy, but the majority did not reach an agreement. Certainly, it wasn't a majority. I would, I would venture, from what I remember, is about a third to a quarter, maybe less, reached an agreement.
Gives us general ballpark. Now I can think about it while we hear from the public. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Neil, the rental registry, you have landlord reports, residential rents, and other information about the rental, rents to the city. What other information would that be?
Well, it would be such, it could depend on what we're really seeking, and we haven't really had an opportunity to think this out thoroughly for Larkspur, what data might be important for us. But it could be information such as, is a parking space provided, utilities.
Okay.
So it's a variety of information that you begin to try to create some parameters of what are the costs of rent and what are the benefits?
It's not too personal.
What's your score footage? How many bedrooms, how many bathrooms?
It's intended to empower the city to do apples-to-apples comparisons later, which is the thought behind a rental registry, is so you would have data to make decisions later, and you would better understand what the rental market actually looks like in Larkspur. So to Neil's point, you need to know what people are actually paying for in their individual rents, because not every landlord rent or relationship is exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have no more questions from the council, so I'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public like to ask questions about the three ordinances? Come on up. Oh, you need to come up and state your name and your address and, so we can hear you. We want, no worries.
First time here, so thank you, everyone, council members, Madam Mayor. My name is Abraham. I am talking here, speaking in front of you on behalf of my organization, Fair Housing Advocates. May I pass something around?
You can give it to the city clerk, please.
Just one copy for each. I'm prepared, I have a prepared written statement. I'm not sure if there's a timeline for me to speak. But before I read that statement, I do want to address two things that came up during the conversation discussion just moments ago, that I think it's important to consider as well, namely, the question that was asked by Mr. Larry Chu, whether there are any numbers or statistics regarding how successful mandatory mediation has been in nearby jurisdictions. While you got some answers, they're not very high. It's important to consider that mandatory mediation may not be successful or may not truly reflect what's going on when you don't consider just cause at the same time, namely because tenants may be afraid to seek this service for fear of retaliation. So with that said, just one thing that came to mind that I want to speak from my own perspective, based on what I heard. So I'll go ahead and dive into my prepared statement. Fair Housing Advocates wholeheartedly supports mandatory mediation, just cause for eviction, rent registry ordinances in the city of Larkspur as part of an integrated approach to preserve affordable housing. We believe these ordinances are crucial steps to preserving affordable housing for the most vulnerable populations who are protected under federal and state fair housing law. When there is a lack of rental protections for tenants, it is members of protected classes, particularly people of color, families with children, persons with disabilities, who are targeted and suffer disproportionately. So in other words, these are fair housing or civil rights issues that we're discussing. Implementing a just cause for eviction ordinance that could operate with a mandatory mediation ordinance would help limit excessive rent increases and would provide responsible tenants with assurances that they can have a stable home and so long as they abide by the terms of the lease. So earlier, the gentleman, city attorney, Sky, did you switch these? I'm so sorry. Mentioned or described or characterized the just cause as additional defenses that tenants could bring up in court. While that may be true, I wouldn't characterize it as such. I would characterize passing just cause or considering to pass just cause ordinance as assurance or stability for home seekers, especially if they haven't done anything wrong, meaning they haven't violated the lease terms, then they shouldn't be forced to be asked to move unless they have broken their lease. So continuing my letter, so tenants would no longer have to fear that reporting unsafe housing conditions would result in reprisals that would cause them to lose their housing and require them to leave their community. Limiting the basis for which tenancies can be terminated will help reduce discrimination against in-place tenants and displacements of members of protected classes. So with that said, we applaud the city for capitalizing on the opportunity to collect valuable data points to their rent registry. This seems to be crucial piece of being able to adequately evaluate the council's housing policies and its effect. So by doing this registry, you'll be able to then analyze how effective these policies that you're considering are. With that said, we urge you to expand the applicability of these ordinance and not to exclude recipients of housing subsidies, namely like Section 8. These comments notwithstanding, we commend the city council for moving forward on these badly needed protections for tenants who are increasingly vulnerable and urge you to adopt mandatory mediation and just cause eviction with rent registry without delay. Finally, we urge the city council to also adopt an anti-discrimination ordinance, which is not being discussed today, prohibiting landlords from refusing to rent to tenants using housing subsidies, such as, just like Marin County, Fairfax, San Rafael, Novato, and other jurisdictions have done. On any given day, you can see Craigslist ads in Larkspur that state no Section 8 on our vouchers or similar language, and of course, there are plenty more who don't put this language in print, but won't consider renting to someone with a housing subsidy. This is a fair housing and anti-discrimination issue in the midst of a housing crisis, and Section 8 is a source of affordable housing that also supports local landlords. Thank you.
Great. Abraham, thank you very much.
I just wanted to, this is not a question for you. Thanks, thanks very much. That was a very helpful presentation, but that raises the question in my mind that maybe the city attorney can help out with. And it was in reference to the comment about the applicability of these ordinances to Section 8 housing and that that's excluded. Can you maybe enlighten us a little bit about how that is true within the framework? I see some provisions in here, but they're not really specific to Section 8 necessarily.
I don't believe, I don't believe that any of these ordinances would be inapplicable to a tenant who's using a housing voucher. It certainly was not the intent in drafting, but I have not, I'm not aware of how that would work.
I was just kind of flipping through it, and I was looking at section, let's see, oops, scribbled through it. This was in, propose, this is in the just cause evictions section. And there's a statement of exceptions, which is 5.56029, I think. And, no, 5.56.020B. There's a listing of exceptions. And the second exception, so that would be B2, says that, notwithstanding anything to the contrary to the above, provisions of this chapter shall not apply to the following types of dwelling units. And in 2B, it refers to a unit where the rent is directly subsidized by a government agency such that the tenant's portion of the rent does not exceed 30% of income. So maybe the commenters, is that what you all had in mind? Or, I'm trying to figure out how that is working within the framework of the concern about whether or not this covers subsidized housing.
Um, yeah, I, I'm just going to be, I, it's, I mean, it's actually possible.
I mean, this may have just kind of gotten pulled out of San Rafael's ordinance and...
That's the thing, I think it might have, and we might not have been focused on this particular issue. And so if the council wanted to move this ordinance forward and take that out, it would be easy enough to introduce the ordinance with the motion revising 020B2 to remove that second statement.
And I also want to make sure in the other draft ordinance provisions that there's not a similar provision that pops up.
It's the same.
I would guess that it would be the same in terms of an exception. And I just want to highlight that at this point, and when it comes back to the council, we can have the council have some discussion about whether they want to, you know, preserve that exception, or if they want to go ahead and have these ordinances be more generally applicable without regard to, you know, low-income folks who need help.
Great. Thanks, John, for doing that. That was going to be my question, too. Larry Chu?
Yeah, regarding the same section, speculation, but could it be that this is included because it's possible to raise the rent more than the 5% threshold without making the net effect of it more than 5% to the renter? In other words, you're getting a subsidy to cover, your subsidy covers the increase, which means the impact to the tenant remains the same.
I believe that is absolutely, just because I've had this discussion for that, is the reason why, in the same section, there's a reference to units where essentially the rent is restricted. And that's basically for below-market rate units where the rents are tied to area median income. And yeah, so the rent increases basically have to track with changes in the area median incomes because of the restrictions on the unit. I suspect it could be the same thing for the direct subsidy, but I don't know for sure. So it's something that we might need to look into a little bit more.
Yeah, because I can now think of a lot of different ways where the math can change things. There's several different factors, which means trying to write this with our intent could end up being a very complicated formula.
Yeah, so while the discussion goes on, I'm going to do some quick checking and see, because it may well be that that is actually the reason for the exception and why the exception would make sense, is that it's basically, well, in terms of restrictions on rent, it would be, what I don't understand is why it would be in the just cause eviction ordinance. I do understand why it would be in the mediation, because in effect, the rents, the allowable rent increases that are going to be felt by the tenant are going to be tied to the subsidy program. So it would make, it would potentially make sense for policy reasons to exclude them. From that, let me do some quick checking.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, if we could do that, that'd be great.
All right, we'll go back to public comment. Hi.
Hi. My name is Sammy Miracle, and I'm with the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, which is a member of the Marin Organizing Committee. MOC is a broad-based group of 23 local religious congregations, civic organizations, and nonprofits working for the common good. MOC commends the city council for its diligence in crafting mandatory mediation and just cause for eviction ordinances. These measures will add stability to the lives of the nearly 50% of Larkspur residents who rent their homes. MOC has heard stories from hundreds of renters all across the county who have faced sudden eviction or egregious rent increases. We know that the housing crisis is ripping apart our families, communities, and workplaces every day as people are forced to move elsewhere for cheaper housing. I personally had a close friend and coworker who was recently living with her partner in a studio in downtown Larkspur, just a couple blocks from here. They were very lucky to have found an affordable living situation within walking distance of our workplace. But when my friend became pregnant, she agonized for a long time about what to do. She loved her job, and she really loved Marin. But although they could afford their studio at the moment, she decided she couldn't risk staying there. She knew that if her landlord decided to raise the rent or kick her out once she had the baby, she would not be able to find another place they could afford and could easily end up homeless. She decided that it was safer to move her family out of California. Just cause for eviction and mandatory mediation are common sense ordinances that, at their essence, simply say that if a landlord is going to uproot a tenant, they ought to justify why they are doing so. Neither ordinance ultimately forces a landlord to do anything that is not in their best economic interest. They just add a measure of predictability to the lives of renters. California has a state law in place that ensures that for homes... California has a state law in place that ensures that for homeowners, their housing expenses in the form of property taxes cannot be raised more than 2% per year. But where is the equivalent for renters? We commend the city for keeping these ordinances similar in scope to what has already been adopted by San Rafael, Fairfax, and the County of Marin. This will simplify compliance for landlords who own multiple properties across the county. MOC also supports the proposed rental registry, which will provide valuable data as the city continues to study these issues. Additionally, MOC would like to see the city continue to explore options to protect its residents in mobile home parks, which are an important source of affordable housing and a valuable part of the community. I would also like to very briefly address your comments regarding AB 1482. I read a little more about it last night. If there are more changes today, I may not be up to date. But my understanding that is as drafted, these ordinances would be stronger than what is at a state level. At a state level, the just cause would not go into effect, I believe, until a resident has been there already 12 months. And it's really in those first 12 months, in my opinion, that residents are most unstable and most vulnerable. There's also a sunset date. We don't know how these laws will change or if they would pass at all. That is still a really big hurdle to overcome. So I would really urge you to act now while these are in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Alex Galton with the California Apartment Association. We submitted a letter of opposition, and I hope you had a chance to read it. Let me start out by saying that I absolutely agree that there's a housing crisis, and I think this is a very important issue to talk about. I think it's an emotional issue, and I think oftentimes when emotions are high, the public policy debate sort of takes backstage. There are pretty clear unintended consequences to these policies. There are. Let's just walk through this for a minute, okay? Mediation does not prevent someone from raising rent. It doesn't mean that a landlord went to mediation with a tenant and all of a sudden that landlord cannot raise rents. That is not the case. Rents could still go up. So let's say the rent does go up, the tenant can't pay. What happens? They're violating their lease, correct? Correct. Could they be evicted? Yes. Is that the conversation that we should be having? No. So while we're talking about providing more affordable housing by supporting these policies, they do not provide more housing or more stability. The mediation program is a good approach to actually bring both parties to the table to have an honest conversation, and I think it's helpful. But what tends to happen when these policies are passed, there is a response. And most of our members are folks that own between one and four units. Some of them live on sites. It's a big deal to them. They don't want to evict people. They'd rather not evict people. We hear stories that hundreds of people get evicted. Do they really get evicted, 100 people? How many people have been evicted in Larkspur? I'm not saying they haven't. I'm just asking. Is there a problem that we're trying to address? Because if there is a problem, let's address it. But if there is no problem, the consequences may be worse. People will respond, and they typically do. So we're ready to work with the city to bring our members to the table, to figure out a way how to move forward. To the last point on state legislation, I do think it's going to move. It's quite rare to have a governor announce that a deal has been made with the Senate Pro Tem and the Assembly Speaker, and then nothing happens. It's going to happen. So I would at a very minimum ask that you wait to see what exactly is drafted and what the bill language looks like, and be consistent with state law. So I thank you for listening. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. We're here to work with the city and the tenants to figure out a way to move forward, but I don't think this is the right way. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Kevin?
Hold on.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Do you know how many landlords or apartment owners in Greenbrier and Larkspur are part of your association?
Not every landlord is a member, and that's sort of the challenge. So I would have to run through the numbers. We also work with the Realtor Association quite closely, but there's a decent amount. I think most of the folks would actually participate if they were asked.
What do you, how would you describe that participation?
I think mediation is a good step forward. I think having a discussion of why rents could be going up, or what the actual fear is why people want to evict, there are cases that folks get evicted for no reason. That exists, and that's unfortunate. But there are also cases when buildings need to be fixed. Sometimes buildings are sold, and the new owner comes in. They may turn apartments to condos. There are many different reasons. So I don't think there's one solution to this issue.
And just in your own personal opinion, when I look at the bill, 1482, it does involve the mediation and the just cause evictions that are outlined there. I didn't see anything about a rent registry. How is, what's your organization's feeling about a rent registry?
We typically do not support it. I mean, I think we find there are some privacy issues, but I mean, it's sort of hard to have a conversation without seeing the specifics of what that ordinance would look like. I don't think it's in 1482.
No, it's not.
But I do think there could be some things that still change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Just before I sit down, thanks very much for that. No, 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 don't go away. I had a couple questions. First of all, thank you for being here tonight and for sharing your perspectives on this issue. It's a difficult one. I'm just trying to understand a little bit better your position, though, in both with respect to the mediation issue and with respect to the just cause issue. Because it sounded like you were objecting to the provisions requiring mediation, but then in your verbal comments tonight, you seemed to endorse it, recognizing that the provisions that we're looking at here for mediation is non-binding mediation. It's simply a requirement that the parties be allowed to have mediation, which is non-binding and which therefore is really little more than what mediations are, which is often just simply a mediated conversation with an attempt to reach a good faith outcome and resolution of disputes. So help me, are you objecting to that or not?
I'm not endorsing mediation as a solution. I'm just saying that if I had to pick one or the other, I think a better approach is mediation.
Than arbitration.
Than arbitration. Of course, we're not proposing arbitration.
Then just cause eviction. Because I think mediation will allow there to be a discussion between a tenant and a landlord, and oftentimes, that discussion leads to a positive outcome.
So setting aside the just cause issue for a moment, you don't have a problem with the mediation?
Not necessarily, no.
Good. That's what I thought I heard you say.
And we have worked with other cities on mediation programs and included our members and encouraged them to participate and worked with them to do just that.
Okay, okay. Well, that's great. I appreciate that.
It's just that when you have the other piece, the mediation program becomes very difficult to actually have a discussion with the landlords, knowing that this is sort of the cycle that they have to go through.
Okay, so that kind of gets me to the second question that I had for you, which was on the just cause. So let's put this mediation part of it to the side. Is there anything specific in the ordinance that has been proposed for us to move forward with here tonight in the just cause ordinance that you find objectionable, that you could point to?
I think generally speaking, there are some gray areas of just cause eviction policies that.
Is there something you could point to in the ordinance that we've got here that would help us understand what the nature of your concern is?
Well, just as a matter of policy.
The mere fact of having a just cause determination is something that you find objectionable.
Correct.
But there's nothing that you've identified in the just cause.
Specifically.
Specifically that we're considering here tonight that you would find objectionable?
Correct. It's just a matter of policy.
You object to the concept?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I have another question for you. So with these ordinances, if we do pass them, what happens with 1482? We'll bring that into the equation. So what is the problem with adding 1482 with what we have?
I'm not.
To me, this is a start.
I think it can be seen as the reverse, though.
It depends on who you ask. If you're on the side of, I support all of these, then sure, this is a start. If you're on the side where I object to these policies, then this is not really a start. We would probably prefer the state version versus this version. And mind you, the state version has a rent cap.
Right, that I know.
Which is really, you know, when you're looking at it and when you step back, short of that, you're not really going to address stability or affordability. If the state bill passes, you will essentially have a safety blanket.
Great.
Potentially.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Nope.
Nobody else want to talk?
Nope. All right, I'll bring it back to the dais. And Sky, do you want to give us an update?
Sure. So I'm still trying to get clarification about the interplay of this issue in the just cause eviction context. But let me just go through actually ordinance by ordinance and just give you my thoughts about it, and Neil and I have obviously been over here discussing it. For the rent registry, one of the reasons that they are, so it actually turns out we went through and checked, and that each of the ordinance proposes to basically exclude both units where the tenant receives a direct subsidy and where the rents are restricted, so basically a below-market rate unit. In the rent registry context, those are excluded because they won't give you market, basically if they're included, you won't be getting information about market rents. On the other hand, you could take out that exception, so landlords would have to report those, but if they also included the information that the tenant is receiving a voucher or that the unit is a restricted one, then the database would be populated accordingly, and so you'd still be able to easily compare market rents. These would basically be excluded from reports, but you'd basically have some tracking about what's happening with those units. So that's up to the council to decide. As drafted, they're excluded. Landlords would not have to report information about them. For the mandatory mediation, I actually think Councilmember Chu had the right answer, which is that the rents for those units are actually controlled by external factors, not by the landlord, or at least the amount that the tenant has to pay. And so including them in the, to the extent that the purpose of the mandatory mediation ordinance is to provide a means of creating conversation and bringing a third party into that discussion between landlords and tenants, I think the view is that that's less necessary in the context of units where the tenant has a voucher or the rents are restricted by a deed, because those rents are being controlled by an external factor. They're not up to the whims of the landlord. For just cause, that's the one where we don't have, I'm still trying to figure out an answer about why that's included. What I would suggest, though, is that, what we did confirm is that that is the same as in San Rafael. So what I would suggest is that if you want to move the just cause ordinance tonight, to leave it in, and then if we figure out that there's actually a good policy reason to exclude it, we'd bring another ordinance behind it to make that change. But I'm pretty sure that there's a reason that we included that and that San Rafael did as well, but we'd want to go back and confirm that now that the question's been raised. But if you want to move it tonight, I'd just suggest introduce it as written, and then we'll figure it out and come back with a trailer ordinance to change it if we think there's a reason to do so.
And that won't preclude us from doing whatever action we think is appropriate, given our further analysis of this issue.
Yeah, exactly. And I mean, we're going to have to do some thinking. Assuming that 1482 does pass, we're going to have to look at the just cause ordinance anyway.
Yeah, of course.
So we'd probably be coming back with some minor changes regardless.
Yeah, because I just think this is an important issue, and it's important for us to be thoughtful about it before we finalize anything in that ordinance.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So can I do that as one more, one last question on your first point about the registry? So basically, what you're saying is that there may be some administrative burdens attached to getting rid of that exclusion in that context, but it actually would make for a more robust database, correct?
Yeah, well, it would be more robust in the sense that you'd have even more information about the totality of what's happening in the rental market, but usually registries are proposed to provide the jurisdiction with information about what's happening in the market where there are no external factors affecting rent. And so the idea of excluding units where tenants receiving a voucher or rent-restricted units is, those aren't really market rent units anyway, so having them in the database is not providing the information that the jurisdiction's interested in. If Larkspur were interested in also tracking what's happening with those units through another means, although as Neil says, there's already some information available about those, but if you wanted another means of doing it, you could take out that exception from the rent registry ordinance, and we'd just make sure that when those rents were reported, that the landlord was also asked to report about the fact that the tenant is receiving a voucher or that it's a rent-restricted unit, and then we'd just track them separately within the database.
And that's kind of what I had in mind, that there might be other good reasons to want to have that information available to us in terms of our assessment and compliance with RENA, and, you know, all kinds of other reasons that might be ancillary to the specific purpose of the registry as we're considering it tonight, that it might make it useful to have. And if the landlords are going through providing these generally information to comply with registry requirements anyway, it wouldn't seem like the administrative burden would be excessive.
No, I think that's true.
So do we add, if it passes with that, we add it in tonight, or do we want to wait to have it rewritten and?
No, for that one, for the rent registry, what I would just suggest is that if you were prepared to move that forward, what you would do is introduce it, but delete subsection E under the definition of rental unit on page three of the rent registry ordinance.
So get rid of E.
Yes, exactly.
And add, and?
And just, that would be it. It would just, then the rest of those paragraphs would be renumbered accordingly, but you just delete E under the definition of rental unit.
Okay. All right. So I need to open it back to the public for you to speak. I'd be happy to do that. Love to hear what you have to say. No, come on. Yes.
Andrea Schultz, Greenbrier Management. I just found out about this, and so I'm trying to decide what's happening tonight, because I'm not really prepared to say a whole lot, except we're reasonable, we don't, we very seldom have evictions. In the 30 years of doing this, I've probably been through seven or something. It's just not. We take care of our tenants. And so this whole thing has kind of taken me and City of Larkspur. I know the other large landlords, 5%? We don't raise 5%. You know, we don't even do that. And so anyway, what's being finished tonight? Because I'm not prepared to say much, and Tom's out of town, and so I'm a little caught off guard.
So we're discussing these three ordinances that you read, and?
I haven't had a chance to read all of them in detail. I know that there's something about a rent registry, which of course, I think is an invasion of business privacy, and I'm not sure what right people have on that. And I know you have just cause eviction. You know, I, we evict so seldom, I'm not sure about the details of that. I'm not that concerned. And mediation, if someone has a problem, we talk to our tenants, and generally, we work it out. But I'm just, how much are you deciding tonight?
So do you have a problem with the ordinances that you have not read, I mean, with what you've heard?
Well, I guess I'd like to feel there's kind of a due process.
Okay, more public, no.
And then you allow them to read and then make comments.
So you did not hear about this till today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
I got an email from Tom, who's on vacation.
Can I just suggest, maybe the city manager will remind everyone that while we're here is just to introduce these ordinances and waive the first reading, and there's further process that will follow on. I think I just did that.
You did.
So we're not taking any action on these ordinances tonight. We're just, they're being introduced, and in fact, I think you've heard some of the discussion already, that we're looking at aspects of these proposed ordinance, and we'll come back at a later date. I don't know whether it's the next meeting or when that would be, but we're not adopting these ordinances tonight, if that's your concern.
I saw a waiver of first reading.
That's what that means.
Oh, you're not going to do the reading, you're discussing this?
We're just discussing it just to introduce it, and then it would be up for consideration and adoption at a later date.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
And we'll make sure you get the information when that happens. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, because I really think that what you had to say was very important in our process, because this is a very comprehensive policy change that we're deciding on right now with one. deciding on right now, with one public workshop, which was July 17, and mostly brought forward by a really... A very heartrending circumstance that's happening in our Mobile Home Park area.
I just heard about it.
But I echo your feeling that, in my opinion, we haven't had enough of the other stakeholders, who are other land managers and land apartment owners in Green Bay and Larkspur, come to the table in this process. And while there may be 80 individuals who live in the Marin Mobile Home Park, and I feel for their situation, that they're under 49... 46% of Larkspur residents live in multifamily dwellings. And there are many large landowners here, Skylark Apartments, the Bon Air shopping area, the Bon Air Apartment area, that haven't really been part of this dialogue. So I hear what you're saying, and which is why I'm feeling very much that we need to slow this down.
Thank you.
That's why I'm echoing that. I'm slowing that down for bringing this other stakeholders at the table, who really owe more of the rental units than anyone else in this community.
Well, we've been here since 1952, and our feeling for the community and the people who live in it, and we try to provide apartments at all levels so that the people who work here can live. And so I feel from just the brief part that we're being penalized for what a few other people have done, and we've done our part. So I'm never much into overregulation. If there's a problem, you address it, but if there isn't a big problem, then don't overregulate.
Okay.
Anyway, I know it's a very personal feeling for a lot of people. I just heard about... I'm not involved in mobile homes, so I am very sorry for those.
Well, I'm happy you came tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, it looks like there's 20 people that want to speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Bridgette Lee Son, and as you know, I'm coming here representing the Marin Park Mobile Home Owners Club, as I have numerous times over the summer. I am... We are, and I personally am extraordinarily grateful about the speed with which you are considering this. However, it does not address, for the most part, the needs of the Marin Park Mobile Home community. Without vacancy control and an arbitration or mediation process that actually has teeth, a number of our residents have gone to mediation with the owners to no effect. And without vacancy control, what's important to remember about the Mobile Home Park community is that these are also people's assets. And when a landlord is allowed to raise the rent when someone is selling their home in almost double in some cases, that takes an asset that was readily marketable for the bulk of the 24 years that I've lived in this community, in this Mobile Home Park community. You sold a mobile home rapidly if you wanted to move on elsewhere. It was a reasonably liquid asset. And that becomes not true when the rents double. And I've watched people in this community now, over the last couple of years, really suffer financially because they've gone elsewhere, thinking they were going to be able to sell their asset readily, as had always been the case, and that was no longer the case. And when people have this... The majority of the people in this park, this is their primary asset. So without vacancy control and without mediation that actually has teeth, we applaud you doing this. We support it, any step to take to support issues around low-income housing and supporting and protecting those people, these people, all of us, is great, and I wholeheartedly support it, and our organization does. But this does not address our needs specifically. So if this is not something that you can address at this point, we'll be back again.
Okay. Thank you. We've got a woman in front of you. Come on up.
No. Yep. Good evening. My name is Lisa Doring. I'm a member of SIRG, showing up for racial justice in Marin. I'm also a resident of San Rafael, and I've been following the various ordinances as they've been discussed and passed in San Rafael. The very first ordinance they put in place was the ordinance against income discrimination. And I noticed that that's not part of what you're considering here tonight. They later considered and then passed renter protection ordinances. I think passing an ordinance against income discrimination is very important. This disadvantages many people to allow an owner to say that a person who has subsidized income is not allowed to even apply to rent a home. So I would encourage you to consider writing and passing an ordinance that protects everyone and does not allow owners to discriminate against people based on their source of income. And I also encourage you to continue your very robust discussion about these renter protection ordinances, because it's very important to keep Marin a healthy and thriving community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sir?
You say that you're not doing some of the things there. There's some things that you can do to help us. I'm in the park, too.
Can you say your name, please, and your address?
My name is Conrad Williams.
Speak in the microphone, please.
My name is Conrad Williams, and I spoke at the first meeting, when we first came. At that time, I mentioned how monthly fees for utilities and services had increased. And maybe you know that the state of California has mandated that low-income residents receive reduced fees. They call them care rates. And that's for the phone, internet, and gas and electric. And I asked Water District if they would give the care rates, and they said they already do, but to people who have their own water meters, any care rate would have to come from the park itself. I called a trash garbage collector and asked if they would offer us care rates, and they said Larkspur sets the rates, and any care rates would have to come from you. You guys set the rates. I don't know about the district fees, which is the sewer service, but their fees have gone way up, too. And between the district and the trash fees, I'm paying almost $100 a month on top of the high rents. Would you please look at these fees and see if any of them can be reduced for those of us on limited incomes? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. James?
A prior speaker touched on an issue which I wondered about, and that is, it isn't clear to me why the ordinance is addressing all apartments when, in fact, the immediate problem, I understand, relates to the specific subset of apartments, or rather, the mobile homes. So I see a significant difference in the level of urgency relating to the Mobile Home Park versus the other apartments. I do realize that there's some large land family-owned landlords, and if there were ever a change in that, there might be drastic changes in policies to the disadvantage of the tenants. But immediately, it seems to me the primary concern is with the mobile homes. And so I think that that should be taken into consideration. The other point, when I looked at the arguments of the... All that said, when I looked at the arguments by the Apartment House Association, they struck me as being vague, generic, and speculative, and therefore did not outweigh the real benefits that the ordinances would provide in terms of enhanced stability. And in particular, well, it makes the statement... Two statements are made. One statement says that mediation is rent control, which of course simply isn't correct. The other argument that they make regarding just cause is they say that it will inhibit the landlord's ability to deal with tenants who destroy property or are involved in illegal units, because the landlord has to rely on testimony from third parties who might be intimidated to testify. Well, I don't think that's the case, because illegal activity would be documented by law enforcement and police complaints and/or nuisance complaints to the city. And if there's property damage, I think the landlord would be aware of that. So I think the arguments that are raised regarding just cause are not persuasive. So I think these ordinances are worthwhile, but I think that it should be recognized that there is a greater degree of urgency and a broader degree of urgency with regard to the mobile homes. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anyone else before I...
Hi. Thank you so much for getting these ordinances on the agenda tonight. We really appreciate it. My name is Ossie Zorkers, and I'm from Legal Aid Marin. We serve tenants all across the county and here in Larkspur as well. As the ordinances read, about half of your population are renters, and so I am really grateful that you are addressing protections for renters here in the city. The first thing I just want to mention is that there's a regional housing summit tonight, and so a lot of the advocates that would be here to support these ordinances are unfortunately at this housing summit. But as MOC said, you know, wide support for rental protections in this county, and we hope that you'll join the other cities and the county in protecting renters with just cause and mandatory mediation. What I just wanted to mention in terms of collecting data, why it's very difficult to know how many evictions there have been, is what normally happens is a tenant gets served with a notice, and they'll move out. And that data is not collected. So what I would say, if you're open to it with your first ordinances, is to add collection of the eviction notices that landlords are giving out to tenants. That way, you can get a better sense of, are your ordinances having an effect? What kind of effect? And you'll have better data in addition to, what are the market rents? How many evictions are taking place? The other thing I wanted to mention is, as the last speaker said, this is fantastic for tenant protecting all the renters in your community, but there is a certain urgency with the Mobile Home Park in Marin... Marin Park, pardon me. So for them, these kinds of ordinances are already in the mobile residency law, things like just cause, right? So what we would ask is that you consider some additional protections, like vacancy control, for those residents and for the other mobile home parks here in your city. And I just want to, you know, really say I applaud you, and I hope that you pass these ordinances.
What is your organization's position, or have they taken a position on the AB 1482, as far as all of the components of it that are going to be supportive by your organization?
So I've read through it briefly, and as the MOC representative said, it looks like they are going to be weaker protections in terms of just cause than the ones that you're considering here tonight. And again, the first year, as has been mentioned, is the most vulnerable time for tenants. And if the just cause does not come to effect until a year has passed for a renter, then, you know, we have to urge you to pass these stronger provisions, and we really hope that you do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, I have a question for you. If we do have a collection, Neil, of these eviction notices, would that be on the registry?
That provision's in the just cause ordinance. There is a provision in the just cause ordinance that the city should receive a copy of an eviction notice.
Okay. All right, I'm going to... I'll come on up.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a moment. There's a provision that, in the context of a dispute about whether an eviction is justified, but I think the issue that's been raised here is whether, as a matter of course, even in the absence of a dispute, where eviction notices have been issued, whether that data is compiled. And I don't think that that would be an outcome of the fact that that has to come through in a just cause dispute.
I don't know. I read the notice... I read section 5.56.055 to say all notice of terminations issued by a landlord need to be filed with the city. But...
Okay, so that... Okay, so that then goes in the registry, or it goes... It's just...
This...
Doesn't go in the registry, but it's information that's compiled and available within... To the city.
Again, I think the intent of the rental registry is to empower the city to make policy in the future by giving us the data to create apples-to-apples comparisons of what's being charged to people. It's not... Collecting data about evictions is a separate matter, and that's why the just cause ordinance calls for you to file with the city. You could put it in the rental registry, but I didn't see those as necessarily meeting the same policy goals.
No, and I appreciate that. So in that case, how would that information be maintained by the city?
I think that if that's... The desire of the council is to have some sort of database of evictions that are occurring in the city, then I would include in a budget proposal the necessary money to provide that resource to the council.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Christine Gero with Marin Park. So I just wanted to give you guys an update from the July meeting. So we currently don't have any mobile homes for sale that are in our park. Three that went on the market in the last month have all sold within two weeks, including one that we owned. It was on the market. I left it up to the sales agent, who we talked about before, Sally Warner. She priced it, she marketed it, and it sold in 10 days at the increased rent. That's increased rent at what we set it at, not the increased rent from the rent increases in July. With regard to the response to the tenants affecting the mobile home price, the new leases that they signed, the one-year and the five-year lease, we made the rents assignable. So there will be no rent increase upon the sale of your home. It's the same rent that the previous tenant had. So there are no more mobile homes for sale in our park at this time. And then the owner-provided rent subsidy that we talked about last time, the Mobile Home Rental Assistance Program. I don't have current numbers today. I was in the emergency room with the baby last night. But I don't know how many of our tenants have applied, but not one has qualified so far for mobile home rental assistance. So nobody has met those low-income standards in our park to receive owner subsidies for rent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Lisa Doring again. Just a quick note, I've been working with the residents' association at Marin Park. And the reason no residents have applied is because you have to go through the Marin Housing Authority, submit all your financial information, and become approved. The Marin Housing Authority is not accepting any applications, so it's impossible to apply for this renter subsidy from the owners of that park. So it's not that people don't want to, it's that they cannot.
Anybody else? I see none, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais so we can continue the discussion. So I know that, Dan, you mentioned we have to go through all ordinances? And you want us...
I think if you want to take a vote, you should clarify, let's vote on this ordinance. Name the ordinance.
Make a motion.
And whether you're advancing it through the first reading for each one of them. That's a decision you have to make about whether you're prepared to do that tonight. I heard conflicting statements at the dais about that. I wondered if the mayor would allow me to put something on the record, though. There was a lot of characterization that we have this out of order, and we're not addressing the urgency of a situation. And I just wanted to remind the council and the public of the direction from the city council after the workshop in July. At that time, staff informed you that there is an incredible level of complexity to what the Mobile Home Park residents were requesting, and the detail of legal analysis and the policy analysis, particularly of unintended consequences, is rather high to what they're asking for, and we couldn't deliver that sort of analysis quickly. We did tell you at that time, though, that if the council desired, the three ordinances that had made their way through neighboring jurisdictions were, for the most part, ready to repackage and present to you. And it was the council said, then please bring them forward as soon as possible. And that's why we chose to bring these three renter protection ordinances to you, is we reviewed what our neighboring jurisdictions had done, felt they cleanly applied in Larkspur, and brought them to you in relatively the same format as were passed in the other jurisdictions. So that's why these came so quickly to you. It was a low threshold to bring them to you. We have not forgotten your direction to work on those other issues. They are not simple issues. They're going to take us a while to work through before we can present you anything that would give you... that would give you the power to make any meaningful decisions.
For the mobile parks.
Well, let's also be clear, what you were asked for from the public that night were some pretty strong forms of rent control, some of which were specific to mobile homes, some which would be broadly applied throughout the city, and the legal risks to the city have to be analyzed, state law applications have to be analyzed, the difference between mobile home parks and the rest of the renter landlord community in the city, they all have to be assessed before we can present you with a substantive and meaningful analysis.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Larry, do you have a question?
No, but when you're ready to start the discussion, I have a proposal to the council.
All right, so I'm going to start with the first ordinance, or do you want to discuss before I break down? You want to discuss it before I break down?
No, I want to make a proposal before we break this down.
Okay.
Rather than having to do it over, I would propose that we continue this meeting until after AB 1482 has been passed, or if they decide not to pass it.
I think that's very, that's where I'm leaning to, because I think, like I said earlier, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves on some of this, and we may have to retract and fit into an existing law that appears to be close to passing. And I'm also in agreement with you that I'm concerned that we haven't opened this whole process up to all of our stakeholders, as we heard from one of them, and some of our other stakeholders, I think, need to weigh in on this. So I hear you on that?
Yeah, I'd rather do it right than do it over.
Or to lead people onto false expectations, if we pass ordinances that then have to be switched around and changed, when they're already creating policies and procedures within their own apartment complexes to deal with the policies that we've put down that then may have to change.
Okay, Kevin?
So if you need that in a form of a motion, we can, I would move to continue this meeting until there is a decision on AB 1482, if it really is next Friday, and to provide enough time after that for staff to properly analyze what is being proposed by the state.
Okay, I'd like to hear what Kevin has to say before we continue with that.
I think what I was going to say, go ahead.
I think just for clarity for the council and the public, we'd probably renotice a hearing, because the exact date isn't clear from your motion, which I understand why. I just think it'd be so that the public understands we will renotice it as if we're starting over after the state makes its decision.
And that's, you know, hopefully within two weeks or so.
Well, I also hear Councilmember Way suggesting that some greater time be given to the landlord community to give you feedback, so I think two weeks may, or may not be sufficient.
We're not speaking four months down the road, that's what I want to clarify. Thanks, Dan. Kevin?
That captured the gist of what I was going to say. I think it's more, there's uncertainty about the legislative process, and I don't want to get kind of too linked into that, so that sounds fine to me.
Okay, Larry Chu, do you want to say it one more time?
All right, I'm going to continue this meeting to a date to be determined, but after there is some formal resolution on AB 1482.
All right, I'll second that.
All right.
Sure, was that consistent with your suggestion?
I feel comfortable. You're continuing to date uncertain in direction of staff as to wait until the state passes whatever legislation it's going to pass, and I think probably Councilmember, Vice Mayor Chu meant to include Catherine Way's preference that sufficient time for the landlord community to respond is provided.
With an understanding that the legislative session is going to work its way through, and, you know, that the timing issue will be addressed just by the calendar.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, no nays. Great, I like it. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I was heading that way, too, Larry. I'm really happy you mentioned that. I know Catherine also was interested in doing that, so it's perfect. That worked out well. So do I. So that's the reason you guys, I really think this vacancy is something that needs to be discussed. Oh, really? All right, we'll continue on. Hi, Shannon. Business Items 8.1, Strategic Communication and Community Engagement Plan. We'd like to have a report.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison, a member of the city council. My name is Shannon O'Hare, and I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, I will be providing you with an overview of our Strategic Communications and Community Engagement Plan. The first rule of communications is to know your audience, and I am not the last speaker of a meeting that's already going fairly late, so I'm going to keep this succinct and really open it up to questions and encourage people to ask me anything they'd like. So attached to our staff report is our Strategic Communications Plan. And first, I just want to provide the purpose and overview of the plan. The city of Larkspur is doing lots of exciting things, so we have lots to communicate. Community expectations of government are evolving. The community is expecting to hear from us more and in different ways than they have traditionally, and the methods with the way we communicate with the public are changing. Traditionally, cities would notice meetings, they'd record their council meetings, they might author a press release to local media. Now, more than ever, we're expected to be on social media, we're expected to be on Nextdoor, to be communicating via Facebook and Twitter. People are expecting notifications and for things to be pushed out to them, and for it to really be an evolving two-way conversation. And also, local government is a place where two-way communication really informs policy and decision-making. So when you put information out to the community, excuse me, the community really responds, and that is the beginning of the conversation for things we implement. It also helps us, the plan will help us identify ways to improve outreach and information sharing with residents and stakeholders, and finally, provide a roadmap to measure and refine methods of reaching our community. So kind of just a brief community overview and profile of our community. Larkspur is an engaged but busy community. We have a highly educated population, we're a bedroom community, so people care very much. This is really people's home, this is not just a place where they live. But we're also competing for their attention. People are busy, we're competing with jobs, we're competing with people's involvement in other community affairs, with schools, with their personal lives, and sometimes in the summer, we even compete with their vacations. So we really have to use all the tools available to us to reach people. Larkspur operates in a niche but healthy media environment. There's not a lot of TV coverage, but the coverage we do have, primarily through print media, is pretty good coverage. When things happen in the community, media gives us fair coverage and fairly thorough coverage. And Marin has lots of local agencies and organizations and a high amount of cross-agency coordination. That's true for every government in California, but that's especially true for Marin, and I think people who've lived here a long time maybe don't really appreciate how unique that is, and how much cross-agency coordination we have. And then, the city's undertaking a number of large-scale projects that require communications and outreach. We have the Bonner Bridge replacement, we have lots of interest in our future library and community center, we're repaving all our roads, and we have lots of other projects that are upcoming. So our current communications methods, public meetings and community workshops, we're all on TV right now, and we have smaller-scale community workshops when there are things happening specific to certain neighborhoods. We have website content and notifications that go out electronically to our community. Occasionally, we put out a citywide physical newsletter and an e-newsletter. There is mailings and outreach, both mandated by law and, as we sees necessary, to let people know things that are upcoming. Physical signage for the community, in-person communication, either electronically or at the counter, certainly just even residents talking to staff, social media, and then department-specific communications that may happen on a project basis. So just to provide a few snapshots and things that we can measure in terms of how we communicate with our community, these are Larkspur's current social media accounts. Unsurprisingly, our largest reach is on Nextdoor, where we have over half of the community that at least has an account. That doesn't mean that people necessarily see everything we post. And for the record, I'd like to remind folks that when the community talks to each other on Nextdoor, the city doesn't necessarily see everything they're talking about by design. Larkspur residents on Facebook is much smaller than Nextdoor. Our community is actually not super-engaged on Facebook. And then if you look at the folks who actually opt in and want to hear from us, unsurprisingly, it's a much smaller audience. They must much rather probably see things their friends and family are up to than news from the city.
Shannon, is that households or individuals for Nextdoor?
For Nextdoor, that's actually residents. That's not like the household number.
Okay, thank you.
If people share accounts, though, right, so, I don't know, there are probably certain households, right?
Yes.
Where the one person views an account.
We have three subscribers.
On our website, you can see what our most frequented, frequently-visited webpages are. Unsurprisingly, the homepage is right up there, followed by the library, and then bids, agendas, and minutes, followed by our building page, human resources, specific departments, and our staff directory of planning, and you can really see how quickly things fall off.
Just note for the public that the city council's dead last.
If you look, we can pull up the website and see what's on the city council page. That's the bias. This actually might be a little bit higher, because this was a year where we had folks interested in running for city council. That's not a failure, that's that they might probably already know who you are, they don't need to search it out.
Yeah, but Kevin, we made the cut. There were categories that didn't even make it up there. We survived to go another day.
If we look at how folks are accessing our website, unsurprisingly, desktop reigns supreme, followed by a fairly healthy chunk of mobile, and then a much smaller share of tablet. For our city site, for websites across all different industries, et cetera, the share of mobile is actually much higher. It's the nature of the content we have that we're actually at 33%. It's now, I believe, depending on what analytic firm you're viewing their statistics from, it's at like 65% to 70% mobile for a lot of websites. Visits by city, this is not perfect, but it's a question I always get asked when you're looking at website data. San Francisco, San Rafael, and Larkspur, this is a little bit technical, but it actually depends on how your IP address is configured. So a fair amount of San Francisco and San Rafael are likely Larkspur residents, or likely folks in Larkspur who are accessing from computers there. What this really captures is if you were a city that either had like a large tourism population, or if we're reviewing these on a regular basis and you see a huge spike, and all of a sudden, half of our traffic is coming from San and Sommo, it may be expected because we're doing a project that might impact that community, or we'd be working with that community, but it's also just something to keep in mind if your ship changes. Top search engines is something I always get asked. I'm actually surprised Yahoo has that much share that might reflect our community, but Google reigns supreme. This is something particularly website developers look at when they're trying to optimize how they configure their websites for various search engines. Website referral is how people, if they're not typing it in directly, how they find our website when they link from another page. So people actually find us from Facebook a fair amount. That's not necessarily coming from our Facebook page, that's coming from anyone who links something from Facebook. Marin Libraries and MarinNet, again, unsurprising, Central Marin Police Authority, and then Marin Mommies and the Friends of the Larkspur Library, how folks find our site. And then when you look at that sources, how many people direct traffic represents if they just type, either type in city of Larkspur or have it saved on their phone or on their desktop, versus search engine traffic, versus link from other sites, which is those referrals. So direct is a large share, pretty closely followed by search engine. Some of the direct share captures staff. And then another question I was going to ask is, keywords searched on the city of Larkspur website? So when you go into that search bar, and see what people search? The way our site is configured, it's not completely precise, but it gives you pretty good metrics on it. People want to know when we're open, if they can get a job with us. Piper Park is always up there for some reason, business licenses, fee schedules, resale inspections, staff directory. This year, there was a lot of interest in a cannabis ordinance we had, so that was something that was searched.
It's easy for them to do the research on certain dots, process? So if you want to do cannabis, are people finding it easy enough to go and find the data on that?
It's a really good question. We don't, in terms of direct feedback we have about people saying how easy the website is to use or not to use, cannabis may not be the best example, because it was pretty time-sensitive, so folks, well, I'm just giving an example, right? But cannabis actually, I think, would be easier to find, because there's not a long, there's not a lot of history to search for for that particular item. It was pretty time-sensitive, so folks who were interested either are, were just interested in the item and knew we had an ordinance, or they read about it in the paper, so it was very easy to find, because it was on our homepage. When you look at that homepage and what people are visiting, they'd find the agenda item fairly easy, they'd be talking to staff about it. We're actually due for another website, not complete redesign, but a refresh with the website vendor we have a contract with, and the site search will be improved. It's one of the things that's gotten a lot better. Certain things are easy to find, others are more difficult to find, and some of that's...
That's why I find.
Yeah, some of it's very, particularly if folks are looking for something, like Julia earlier, I should actually give a shout-out to Julia, she helped compile. When she said that she was learning a lot about analytics, she helped me with this report. A lot of this is actually her work that we worked on together.
So it's still in the process of being easier access, if you want to look up some ordinances or...
Right, but one of the, one of her projects, right, was to compile a lot of the information about Roseland and the history of the library community center project in one place, because the way folks access that information has kind of evolved, and what they're interested in has changed over time.
Great.
Just because you mentioned the ordinances, the municipal code is another vendor we pay to create a completely searchable municipal code. So people who want to do research into the ordinances, into the municipal code, they're much better off following the link that's right on the front page to the municipal code. And it takes you to this third-party vendor that specializes in creating searchable government code.
But people don't know that, do they?
I don't know the answer to that, but if they just type an ordinance, then they may not get the right result by trying to search on our website. It's why we try to have municipal code up front.
Okay, all right.
And on that point, there's another project that the city clerk's office has been working on, and right now, the planning and building department's working on it, of making a lot of our old files more digitally friendly, they're digitizing them or coding them better, and then eventually making those public through Laserfish. So some of this, the website's a great tool, not all this will necessarily be housed in the city of Larkspur website, they'll actually be housed in other websites that'll link from our page.
To that last point, going, I know it's going to be difficult going back, but going forward, can we have the documents in their native form, where you create the PDF from Word as opposed to scanning it?
As an image?
Yeah, as an image, exactly, because you can't search an image.
Yes. Yeah, you can if you OCR it, and everything...
Yeah, but if you save the PDF, save to a PDF, then it's already done, rather than a scan to a PDF.
Correct. So everything in my time here that's been out of any department I've worked at has been saved in PDF from Word or from whatever, from whatever format it is. If it's text-heavy, it's not scanned as an image. The project that I alluded to in Laserfish, part of it is putting in the metadata when it is in fact an image, right? It is a set of plans, but you just don't want it scanned as an image without any data to be able to search for, so. So that's just kind of a snapshot, there's more in the actual report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But when we developed what we kind of want to do in the next year, is to really expand routine communications with the public and really build on what we're already doing, measure and review these communications to both see how successful they are, see what kind of return of investment they are, and see if we're reaching the people we want to reach, and really create a master, what I call like a communications calendar for the city, where we create a master document of everything that's going on across departments and how we want to communicate it. Do we want it to be a Facebook post? Do we want it to be a Twitter post? When do we want to communicate it? How many times do we want to communicate? How many times do we want to communicate it? And then, of course, measure those results. And then on that, increase coordination across departments, enhance our collateral materials and some of the branding. Collateral materials are letters that go out, they're physical pieces of information, they're flyers, they're newsletters, et cetera, to really let people know when they look at it immediately, this is from the city. Increase website and social media presence, expand relationship with local media. We have a good relationship with our local media. It's primarily reactive. We don't reach out to them often unless there's something that's especially pressing, so we want to strengthen those relationships, especially because particularly in library and recreation, they're really building their programming and what they're offering to the community, so we should really celebrate those successes. Enhance coordination and communication with partner organization and agencies. I put on here, update and coordinate emergency communications. That's not part of this plan. Emergency communications will be a number of separate plans that are both very specific, but I wanted to at least mention that in the communications plan, that that's something the city is very much thinking of. And then regularly update and refine this plan as we continue it. So that is the presentation.
Well done. Thank you. Any questions for Shannon?
So Shannon, I go, I have that notify me, you know, and clicked a bunch of different things on it just to keep up to date. It doesn't come through very often. Has notify me been assessed to see that it's, that notifications are actually going out? Because I didn't see notify me in there.
So notify me, I alluded to, I didn't pull the metrics off of notify me. Notify me I had under one of the ways we communicate, under the website content notifications.
Yeah.
There are a number of different notify me's, and each of them are separate, right? So I imagine that you might have like done all of the notify me's?
At one point, when I was nerding out on this job, yeah.
Right, so some of those projects for notify me might not come through very often. If it was like the original outreach for the library and community center, there might be notify me associated with it. There's a notify me for city council meetings, and so those go out with every council meeting. That's something staff regularly does. There's a notify me when city council meeting videos go live. There's one for planning commission meetings, and I know that all of those go out regularly.
Maybe I'll just check mine to make sure they're set up, because I, I do the notify me for Corder Madera also, and I seem to get something 10 times a day in my box, my mailbox. So I'll just see if I hadn't set them up right. But I think that's a really good technique for us to use further to push out to people.
That's one of our most, so there's, we didn't talk about this much, but there's putting things on the website and then making sure folks know that things are updated on the website, right? So it's like noticing a meeting versus making sure people notice there's a meeting.
Right.
So the notify me is an incredibly powerful tool that we have, and is a lot of times how we get feedback from folks when they notice something, but.
Very good. Larry?
You know, about a year or so ago, you had given us some general statistics indicating that there were something like 12 or 14 sources of how people prefer to receive their information from the city. So I know it's difficult to get all, all of those, but does your plan say at least cover the majority of the way that people want to receive their information?
I think so. What's the, is there a specific?
I want to chime in, and Mill Valley actually did a survey a few years back, and the problem they ran into is they asked, what's your preferred way of receiving information? And of the 12 or so options, they all scored about the same. So it's difficult for us to say the plan addresses any one in particular because we're not yet at a point where there's clear favorites among the community. I would actually say we've been learning to target the way we outreach to neighborhoods because we've actually started to see trends in certain areas. We know which rate neighborhoods respond really well to Nextdoor, and that's the best way to get a message to that neighborhood. We still have a few neighborhoods we know we actually should put a flyer on people's doors if we're still going to get their attention. So it's hard, but we're still kind of in that case-by-case mode.
Yeah, okay.
And you can't capture that so easily in, in the plan.
And some of it, right, there's, there's, certain things are designed to where it's very easy to capture, but then there might not be a high penetration. So although I put up website statistics, and you can get a bunch of statistics off of Facebook, you can see that someone's looked at it. You don't really capture if they've absorbed it, the same way where it's pretty hard to know if someone actually looked at their door hanger. You can assume that people go in their front door, most of our folks do. But that may, even though it's really, really hard to measure, did that reach people or how many people? That's something that anecdotally, right, is something where you can say, we delivered this to every single person, and we know that this especially might reach people who, you know, don't want to be on social media, because then you go in the other direction, right? Whereas if you only look at things you can measure, you're missing parts of the community, especially on critical things like, you know, when you're going to close your road or have a major impact in your life. You want to reach people, you shouldn't expect folks to opt in to all of this to know what's going to happen in their neighborhood, right? It's an unfair.
Well, some people do live in a cave.
Any other questions?
When you consider how many people said, oh, the Bonner Bridge is going to be closed, it's like...
Well, so the, we said physical signage there, one of the most powerful ways that folks, especially, we talk a lot about residents, but capturing commuters and other folks in our community, people who work here, is the power of a physical sign is incredibly, it's very old school. It works.
It works well.
It works really well.
This is great. This is our first time having a strategic communication and community engagement plan, so nice job, Shannon. It's great and in need, so I like, I like where we're going. Super. All right, we'll move on to 8.2. You guys have been so patient out there. Marin wildfire prevention and mitigation initiative. Hi, crew. Is this your second meeting tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Okay.
Okay, I know it's late. I will try to rip through this as quickly as I can.
Scott, can you, can you speak into the mic? Yes. Thank you, Captain. All right, chief.
Okay, I know it's late. I'll try and rip through this as quickly as possible. I have a few prepared remarks, and then we'll buzz through this PowerPoint. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to spend some time with you this evening to brief you on the progress that is being made toward the development of a comprehensive countywide wildfire prevention and mitigation initiative. I know that you're all aware that this work has been underway, so tonight, I would like to give you a brief status check on where the project is currently, and hopefully provide you with enough background and detail concerning the project, so that you'll be able to provide any feedback and direction as the remaining pieces of the initiative are solidified and potentially brought before the voters next March. Joining me tonight to help with any specific questions that are within their areas of expertise are Battalion Chief Kristi Neal from the Marin County Fire Department. Chief Neal is responsible for the fuels and vegetation management program for Marin County Fire, and has served as a key subject matter expert during the development of the proposed initiative. Also joining us tonight is our own Fire Marshal Ruben Martin from Central Marin Fire. Chief Martin has served multiple terms as the President of the Marin County Fire Prevention Officers, and is very familiar with the unique challenges that we face here in Marin with regard to vegetation management and fire prevention issues. I mentioned the unique challenges of Marin, not because our trees and brush grow differently than in other areas of the state, but because here in Marin, we have such a large proportion of our population either working or residing within or very near high fire hazard areas. And at the same time, we have so many separate and distinct agencies attempting to address the issues of prevention and mitigation individually within their jurisdiction. That's what makes Marin a little unique. We certainly do have some good examples of creative partnering between agencies to accomplish projects of mutual benefit, but in general, no single agency in this county is funded, equipped, or prepared to implement the type of comprehensive and sustained improvements to preparedness and resilience that are proposed by this plan. A website, a website for the initiative just recently went live, and this is on the homepage. It's an introductory.
Wildfires of Zegar burn longer, cause more damage, and kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather, and same topography that drove that fire that night.
Wildfire risk is now a constant threat in California, especially in communities like Marin with lush vegetation and developments near significant areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and abundant undeveloped lands are considered source fuel for a potentially devastating and fatal wildfire, similar to the ones that have ravaged Sonoma, Napa, Lake Counties, and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are adjacent to wildlands because of a strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter, and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from 19 separate cities, towns, fire districts, and the county. But there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real, and one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, but a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
In response to the need for coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin, local fire agencies and municipal governments have proposed creation of a new joint powers authority, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in urban wildfire detection, improved alert and warning systems, resident evacuations, vegetation management, and fire hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluations, educating the public about wildfire safety, and more.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to be in addition to, not in replacement, of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our Marin communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation, removal along critical evacuation routes.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located along the roadside. A second issue to address would be improved defensible space inspection program. How that is involved is by allowing a cadre of inspectors to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect every single property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become more fire safe.
Currently, no dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a local funding measure on the ballot in 2020 for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately $20 million per year is needed to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid a major wildfire in Marin, but luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense point out the need to have a coordinated countywide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all this come together.
In the coming months, cities, towns, and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and decisions will be made about securing dedicated funding for the authority's programs. To stay informed, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
So that's pretty great production, huh, on the new website? I should also mention also that Katie Rice is here joining us, and she's been very involved in this process as well. So a little background, we're all familiar with the North Bay fires of 2017, and of course, the, the fire season from 2018. Together, they were the deadliest and most destructive fire seasons on record. And we all know that our Marin vegetation has gotten to a point where it's hazardous and it needs to be dealt with. We have 19 local fire agencies providing taxation authority, and as Chief Tyler pointed out, wildfire knows no borders. And so this is what is bringing us here tonight, is to talk about countywide approach, because clipping these things off, community by community, with varying degrees of effectiveness, is not going to prepare us as a county well for the critical conditions that could arrive. We also know that fire seasons are longer now than they used to be. We found that since the 1970s, our fire seasons are averaging 84 days longer than they were in the 70s. We're very good at fire suppression in Marin, and we have a great track record of keeping fires small, but what we're struggling with is the prevention work, because it is, what needs to happen is well beyond our current means, and so that's why we're seeking to change that. Insurance losses are rising. Interestingly, this slide doesn't even show the insurance losses from 2018, but you can tell that on average, over the last 10 or 20 years, losses are, are rising. 74% of the homeowners who lost their homes in the Sonoma County fires were underinsured, and it was found that the rebuilding costs after the Sonoma County fires, the average cost per square foot to rebuild in Sonoma County was $500 per square foot, and we can expect the Marin residents will have to deal with even higher costs than that should we need to rebuild after a devastating wildfire. This slide is straight out of our CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which we'll talk about a little bit in a few more slides. But basically, what this shows through some pretty high-tech fuel modeling is the different flame lengths that we can expect under certain circumstances. And this is not even one of the extreme north wind events that could occur. This is a, considered an extreme day, but we're talking about 85 degrees with a south-southwest wind. So this is a, these are the conditions that occur quite often throughout our typical summer. And what you see up there is that the, anything that's in red is indicating expected flame lengths under those conditions of greater than 11 feet. And what that tells us is that we cannot put firefighters in a direct attack on a fire when flame lengths are expected to be above 11 feet. Generally, that's going to require aircraft support and dozers, and what we call an indirect attack. Only in the areas that are green under those conditions would we be in a position to put firefighters directly on the fire line with hoses and other tools to fight the fire. So like I said, this is, this is a, a set of conditions that we see quite often throughout our typical summer, and this just gives you a quick snapshot of how serious our fuels issue is. The three documents that we've leaned on in preparing for this initiative are the CWPP that I just referred to that was developed back in 2016 with participation from all of the fire agencies throughout Marin, using data and science to prioritize all of the wildfire and vegetation management priorities throughout the county. The next one is the 2018 Lessons Learned Report that was commissioned by the Board of Supervisors, where we got together with the, the decision-makers and the officials from Sonoma County and talked to them about what their experience was, what they were prepared for, what they had in place, what they wished they had in place but didn't during those events. And then we came back and looked at what our situation is, and came up with quite a few recommendations for things that we need to address. And a lot of the recommendations, in that there were 24 alone just for the fire departments, a lot of those recommendations have already been accomplished. a lot of those recommendations have already been accomplished, but many of them are large-scale things that need to happen on a countywide basis that would be best approached at that level. And then finally, last year, or earlier this year, the Marin Civil Grand Jury issued their report, talking about taking a completely new approach to wildfire preparedness in the county. And they actually specifically recommended the formation of a countywide JPA, much like what we're proposing. So the solution that's being proposed is the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, which would be a countywide JPA consisting of local fire agencies, cities, towns, and the county of Marin. And how this is structured is into three separate categories. And we're talking about spending approximately, or assigning approximately 60% of the funds that are generated through a potential tax measure to core services that this JPA will oversee. Within the core services are wildfire detection and evacuation program improvements, vegetation management, and fire hazard reduction improvements, and these are the, on a large scale, countywide major projects, grant management, and public education. Then in the next category down is the 20% will be assigned toward defensible space evaluation and home hardening evaluations. Then finally, another 20% would be dedicated to very local wildfire prevention mitigation. So these are things that, within the local jurisdictions, 20% of the revenue that's generated will be spent in the neighborhoods. People will see work getting done in their neighborhoods that is specific to the particular threat that they have in their neighborhoods.
Scott, can I just ask you one thing about that?
Sure.
If we have, are they imagining or intending that home hardening and defensible space evaluations being done by this, employees of the JPA? And let's say there's a violation. Would it, the violation of that ordinance be then put through their local agency or through this JPA?
So, that's an interesting, one of, I was going to get into that later with the subcategory of how the defensible space program would be managed. But typically, or how it's being proposed, there'd be an option for the local agency to actually pull that program completely within the local jurisdiction, provide their own inspectors, and take a good portion of the money that would be allocated for their region to run that program in-house. The other option is to use the cadre of countywide evaluators and inspectors. And then, in either case, the abatement process is envisioned to be handled at the county level. It would be, it's, it's thought that it would be a much more streamlined process with professionals that are doing that on a daily basis, and access to funds to precede these abatements and whatnot. Okay. So, just going through, kind of specifically, and very quickly, some of the core programs. The wildfire detection and evacuation program improvements that are envisioned, this is the very number-one concern of Marin residents, is evacuation, emergency alerting systems, and an organized and coordinated approach to having folks get out of harm's way. And then, this is part of the large-scale vegetation management program that would be using high-priority projects that are already identified by the CWPP. And this is grazing goats, using mechanical removal crews, some prescriptive burning. And all of this would be done with environmentally sound practices. These are not the type of projects that you would see in your neighborhood necessarily. These are the ridge-top shaded fuel break type of projects that are going to be benefiting multiple communities. And then just some more photos of the typical process to create these defensible spaces around our communities with grazing goats and hand crew work and chipper programs, contractors, masticators, mowers, mulchers. And then this is just a quick example of, it's a little bit hard to see on the scale, but that's, that's a photograph with Sleepy Hollow right in the center of the photograph. And this just kind of gives you an idea of when coordinated vegetation management projects are conducted, you're, you're getting more bang for your buck, because you're, you're really doing this to protect multiple communities at once. What's being done there in Sleepy Hollow has a direct impact on the neighborhood right across the ridge, which would be Terre Linda. And down through the Ross Valley, the same thing, we're dealing with the same thing. What helps Fairfax will help San Anselmo, and likewise, all the way down to Cordermadera. Public education is a huge component of this plan, and I think it's very commonly understood and agreed that Fire Safe Marin has been a phenomenal resource in this county for educating the public and providing resources to the public. But they are terribly understaffed, and they can do, if they had some support, they could really do some amazing things, even greater than what they're already doing. They also are a huge supporter of the Firewise USA program, and additional funding and coordination could increase the amount of Firewise communities that we're currently developing throughout the county. Coordinated defensible space management program, that's what we were just talking about. This, the one little caveat that I will add to the option of bringing the program to inside the local jurisdiction is that, how it's currently envisioned, the local jurisdiction would only get about 90% of what would be spent on that jurisdiction through the countywide program, because 10% is expected to be retained for the abatement process, which would be happening on, at the county level. My guess is that most of the smaller and midsize agencies that participate will at least initially use the countywide cadre of evaluators. I know I'm excited to, because I'm all about standardization and having the folks that are doing this every day out there doing it. They're going to get well-practiced at it, and they'll be professionals. And then, the other 20% going to the local community needs, these are, these are smaller projects that are happening in your neighborhoods, such as maybe widening the vegetation clearance on, on secondary evacuation routes, or even non-evacuation route neighborhood streets, where just because you're not a pre-designated evacuation route, having roadside vegetation clearance is still an important project. And then other individual needs that, that are unique to a community. So if you, if, for instance, one community had a problem, a specific problem with homeless encampments in the dangerous fire areas, maybe they would want to spend some money on, on that program, trying to address those needs. Maintaining the parking boxes and the restricted parking in the wildland urban interface areas, that could be something that this money could be spent on. So, it's, it's anticipated that this program would require about $20 million annually. It would be a stable source of locally controlled funding. And it is also important to note that it's not expected, this is not a tax shift, this is not, it's not supplementing or supplanting what is already being spent. So if a community is already spending money on their fire department and their prevention program, that's great. That needs to stay in place. The money that's going to be generated from this tax is to go on top of that, in addition to, to take what we're doing further. The countywide parcel tax is expected to go on the ballot in March of 2020, and it would require a two-thirds vote of support to pass. And the recent polling that we've done, we have in a few slides coming up, shows very strong support. So this is that same slide that we looked at earlier, but with the dollars attached to it. So the core programs anticipated to be funded at approximately $12 million annually. Those are for the large-scale vegetation projects and public education. And then, $4 million apiece for the defensible space program and the local wildfire mitigation The polling data, just a couple of slides. This is the countywide data. And what the polling company did was they assessed three different versions of a tax, whether it be an 11 cent per square foot parcel tax, or a flat rate, $170, $178 per parcel tax, or a quarter cent sales tax. Those are the three options that were provided to the likely voters for the March 2020 ballot. And the countywide results showed very strong support for both the parcel taxes and not as great a support for the quarter cent sales tax. Countywide, the 11 cent per square foot seemed to be favored even over the $178 flat parcel tax. These, to, countywide, the, the sales tax did not do very well in the polling, but depending on the community, those two styles of parcel tax kind of varied, which one was preferred and which one wasn't. In the Ross Valley, now, this is a smaller sample size, so your margin of error goes up. So just with that caution in mind, what we found within our, our region was that the 11 cent per square foot was quite a bit higher in terms of being favored by our voters than the, than the straight flat parcel tax. So again, for the fiscal accountability side, all the funds that are collected would stay local and cannot be taken by the state. All the funds would have to be used for this specific program and not diverted to other programs. There is anticipated that there would be independent oversight with annual reporting of financials and annual audits. There's a lot of talk now also about the Citizens Oversight Committee to help with transparency. And also, we accept, we expect to offer exemptions for low-income seniors. And we expect that this will also, having this program in place will also help us tremendously in qualifying for other grants, because we're not going to just rest on this income. There's a lot of money out there to be had that we've been successful at going after. But the problem with grants is, you can do a great project and get that grant, but then three years later, the work that you've done needs to be done again to maintain that work. And there's no guarantee that you're going to get a grant in three years to maintain that work. And so this will be a steady income that we can use to help us actually qualify for grants that we wouldn't otherwise qualify for because of matching fund requirements and regional approach requirements. So how will it be managed, and who will be in charge? What is anticipated is that the county is broken up, under this plan, into five specific geographical regions. And the Board of Directors that oversees this entire program would consist of two representatives from each of these five geographical regions, and these would all be elected officials. So perhaps one of you would participate in the Ross Valley region on the Board of Directors. And then also representing the, all of the smaller districts would be one rep, one elected official. And those are the small fire districts that are listed on the slide, as opposed to the larger fire districts like Nevado and Southern Marin, et cetera. And then, so, at the top, this is showing the entire governance that's anticipated. You have the Board of Directors that we just spoke about in the red at the top. And they will be provided with a work plan and a budget proposal from an operations and budget committee that consists of, in a similar fashion, two representatives from each geographical region, but these would be staffers. These would be fire chiefs, city managers, positions like that, that are, that are developing the work plan and the budget for the coming year. And then, of course, they're fed by information and advice, and from a technical advisory committee that consists of at least one person from each jurisdiction, not just each region. And then that will also be opened up to other agencies like land management agencies, MMWD, PG&E. These are, this is a non-voting layer of the, the organization that is providing technical expertise and advice. And so, the timeline and next steps, we're looking at, we're in the first section there, where we're providing some, some presentations and educating everybody on what is anticipated. And then we expect to come back in October to councils to ask them to approve a resolution placing this on the ballot for the March 2020 election. And then hopefully, in November, the Board of Supervisors will take those resolutions. The JPA will be finalized, we'll know who's participating, hopefully it'll be everybody, and they'll go ahead and place this on the ballot. And then in March, we'll find out what happens. And then I just, before I end, I wanted to reiterate that a website just went live a couple of days ago at MarinWildfire.org. And that video that we saw earlier in the presentation is right on the home screen. In addition to a lot of other pretty good information, there's an FAQ section, there's previous articles about this process, and a lot of great information that I encourage you to go seek. And with that, if you have any questions or would like to provide any feedback or guidance as we fine-tune what we're doing, I would love to hear it.
Well, very thorough and great video. So thank you. Larry?
Presumably, the square foot proposal, 11 cents per square foot, that's dwelling size, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that comes out to an average of about a little over 1,500 square feet per home. But that seems low relative to the people who favor it.
Well, I do know that currently, a formal tax study is being conducted to sort out exactly what would be generated under the various scenarios. And I should have said, actually, that the 11 cents is what is being proposed and what was kind of estimated as what would be needed to get us to that approximately $20 million. But it may be true that after the tax study, that that percent, or per square footage amount could go down. We don't anticipate it to go up.
No, I'm not thinking in terms of low for your funding, but the favorability of the 11 cents over the 178 flat rate.
Yes, and, and, you know, that was something that, in the, in the polling, you know, certain people, I guess, as the polling went out, they would have to do their own personal math, but that's the result that they got.
I'd recheck that one, because I don't think a lot of people have thought about the math on that.
Perhaps not. It was interesting to see the different regions and how it varied, though. So, I mean, some of the suspicion was that, you know, depending, the areas with the larger homes maybe tended to, you know, prefer the, the flat parcel tax versus the per-square-footage parcel tax, but we're just speculating, really.
Yeah, I mean, I can only really think of two neighborhoods where the homes really consistently fall below 1,500 square feet.
Right.
You know, you're talking Heather Gardens and along Holcomb.
Right. I think countywide, it was determined that the average square footage of the homes countywide was somewhere between 2,000 and 2,100 square feet.
Yeah, so you're already above that, and when you look at Ross Valley polling at 80% preferring the 11 cents, people start doing the math after the fact, and you end up being in the wrong position on that.
It could be, but it's also, you know, this is Marin, and that's obviously a more progressive tax versus the flat parcel tax, and so maybe that's part of the motivation.
I just want to correct the chief, that's numbers, the median size, not the mean. Just half of the, well, there's a subtle but significant difference to that.
There is.
The 20, the 2,100 numbers, the median size of a home, not the mean.
So, oh, sorry, Larry, go ahead.
Just one more quick question. You had already said that this is in addition to taxes that are already in place for communities who have voted for some form of who have voted for some form of fire prevention or mitigation. How, how are those communities polling?
You know, I, I don't know what I, actually, what I meant to say, if I had said that, was that this is supposed to be in addition to programs that are already in place. And so, taking the example in Larkspur or Cordermadera, our local area, you know, the monies that we are currently putting toward our prevention program and our we-abatement program and stuff, this isn't expected to, you know, we're not expected to use that money now in some different area and just use the new money. It's supposed to be in addition to what we're already doing. That's what's envisioned, at least.
Yeah, so, you take Mill Valley, for example, where they already have something.
Right.
Do you know how their residents would feel for an additional tax?
I don't know how their residents would feel about it. I, I mean, nobody likes taxes, but it seems like what's happening now is that everybody is realizing that what we're doing, even on a city-by-city basis, even if one city is doing an amazing job with their program, what we've found over the last couple of fire seasons is, it really is a bigger problem than a city-by-city problem. You can be perfectly compliant in your city, but if we are under the right conditions, if the neighboring city is not as compliant, it's going to still impact you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I think maybe there's a sentiment that we're all in this together and we need to.
Yeah, I think that's where the local councils need to really get the outreach to their specific communities, because clearly, when you look at the red spots, they're, they're not even in areas where they're within anyone's city limits.
Oh, yes.
You know, and yet, it could be perceived as something that the county should be doing, because, you know, you say, okay, well, you know, that's county property. We're not getting the benefit of that.
Yeah, there's plenty of red spots within almost all of the cities in Marin, for sure.
But, you know, to your point, that's, that's the message that really needs to get out.
Do I have to add something, chief? Just, do my add something?
Please.
That Mill Valley manager and I are both participating in the drafting committee for the JPA. And you're right, they have a municipal tax that a portion goes to fire prevention. But I'll tell you, if the manager's on the committee, he's probably the one with the longest list of stuff he can't do, because he doesn't have enough money, because they have a lot of physical constraints in Mill Valley that they can't address. So, so I know he has a list he's ready to talk to the voters about, and it's a key point the chief made, is we're not supplanting what we're doing, we're supplementing and complementing it. And whether you're Mill Valley or Southern Marin Fire District who do have revenue streams already, those chiefs and those managers are going to tell you there's so much more to be done.
Well, there are three, at least three of us in the room here that worked on the measure for the MIRA, and, you know, we're very aware of how razor-thin two-thirds can be, and especially if you got roughly about 22% who are just going to automatically vote no.
Right, yeah.
You know, so, making sure that you have a good count, especially when your prob, your probable group is such a wide, still considerably a wide band, you know, statistically speaking.
Right.
Good point.
I do know that the, I heard this anecdotally, but the company that did the polling was apparently very impressed with the response and thought that was a stronger favorable response than they've seen in most of their polls, so that was encouraging.
Yeah, that's good.
Perfect timing, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Have you got a question?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I mean, thanks very much for this great presentation, very helpful. And this is just a question that reflects my own ignorance about these things. And in terms of, of the timing of going to the voters on a tax, I don't know what else may be contemplated by different agencies, entities, in terms of what could be going on the ballot next year as tax measures. Have you all taken that into account, and does that change the polling outcomes when, when voters are told what else they might be confronting on the ballot?
I think maybe the, did you guys confront that in your committee?
Yeah, I'd say the answer to your question is that all of the jurisdictions were asked what they were contemplating individually, and the March ballot was the one that met everyone's goals and timelines and needs. And so, a, a large reason it's been selected is because of that. Going in March allows communities, individual communities to make subsequent decisions based on the outcome of that vote.
But there's still plenty of things that are probably, presumably, in the hopper in terms of future potential tax measures that may require voter support.
You mean unrelated to this issue?
Yeah, unrelated to this.
Well, that's, that's true of every ballot.
I know, I, I know it is. I'm just kind of curious how that, how that all kind of fits in in terms of timing and expectations and...
And certainly, the clock is ticking. You know, we, we're feeling particularly under the gun just to get our process in place, and it's being well-publicized. So, I would anticipate that any other tax measures that are planned would probably start to appear soon.
The March ballot is a good one for a countywide measure, because it allows it to take the spotlight. And, you know, it's not as common for some of the smaller local issues to be on a March ballot. I think that's another appealing aspect of it.
Okay. Yeah, it was just, again, it was just a reflection of my own kind of ignorance about how these things work and the dynamics of, of people in this county, and they're often very vocal opposition to increases in their property taxes.
Sure.
Great. Any other questions?
Well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fingers are crossed. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, I have to find my agenda. I believe we are our...
Public comments.
Oh, public comments, sorry. Any public comments about what, about what we just saw in Hurry? Come on up. Thank you, Sky.
I am Tom Flynn, Larkspur resident, and I just wanted, sorry. I just wanted to speak today on behalf of a group of environmental and climate organizations who support the Wildlife Prevention and Mitigation Initiative. Our primary goal in this process of the formation of the initiative is, is to broaden the scope and appeal of the initiative for the significant constituency concerned with climate change and the quality of Marin's environment. First and foremost, we applaud the Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority's mission to build a resilient community and reduce the threat of wildfire to our homes, lives, infrastructure, and environment. Countywide effort and resources sought are appropriate to the urgency and escalating scale of the dangers we face. As in the, as the initiative is further refined, we urge the authority and all Marin communities to consider the impact that climate change has on the conditions that intensify wildfires and prolong the duration of the wildfire season. We endorse fire mitigation strategies that also protect the resiliency of the national environment, reduce carbon emissions, and sequester carbon wherever possible. And, you know, obviously, our, our fire experts recognize that, that, you know, keeping vegetation, that, you know, the heritage trees, the, you know, the native plants as much as possible is part of that plan, that, that, you know, fire suppression isn't about eliminating all the vegetation, and it's, it's more about eliminating vegetation hazard that's close to lives and, and property. So, the, the initiative offers a real opportunity to reduce both the threat of wildfire and the climate change that is fueling that threat. It's also an opportunity for full community participation in carbon reduction efforts as we harden our homes and manage our vegetation to mitigate fire risks. Representatives from leading climate and environmental groups are invested in making the, this opportunity a reality. To that end, we have prepared a list of amendments to the WP and MI framework and an outline of best practices for environmentally sensitive vegetation management that we are sharing with regional fire professionals. Our intention is to support the strategies proposed by the initiative's framework while implementing them in ways that reduce the fire, wildfire threat long-term. Specifically, we suggest vegetation management using environmentally sound practices, the minimized release of greenhouse gases, compost vegetation for safe carbon sequestration, and protect the biodiversity and resilience of Marin's landscapes. A second, public education efforts that promote fire-resistant homes, defensible space, and household carbon emission reductions mitigating future wildfires. Replacing highly flammable, non-native plants with fire-resistant varieties, grants to support seniors, persons with disabilities, and low-income homeowners who need assistance maintaining defensible space and hardening their homes. We recommend the formation of, of a Fire, Marin Fire Authority Citizens Advisory Committee along the lines of the San Rafael Wildfire Advisory Committee. We suggest including representatives from the climate and environmental communities. The residents of Marin are a tremendous resource, and we're ready to pitch in and help. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
James Holmes, Larkspur, resident of Baltimore Canyon, heavily vegetated homes. Just as a word to the wise, I think that support for this kind of initiative will be inversely proportional to the extent to which people fear having inspectors come into their homes or their property and making very drastic demands with regard to defoliation. This is a real fear. I certainly know it would affect my approach. I just, as a personal note, by contrast, for example, Mr. Martin, when he came to the neighbor's home to inspect, he was very reasonable and modest in his recommendations and, and fully cognizant of the fact that we were in an urban forest. But if people are afraid of radical inspections and, and, and extreme demands, or what are perceived as extreme demands, with respect to the removal of, of longtime plants and trees and the expense thereof, they are going to be afraid. So, I would strongly recommend concentration on, well, let's put it this way, I don't think small urban, small suburban lots and old plants are really the focus of the problem. So, I urge to, the focus to be on the more, the, the larger-scale projects and problems. Thank you.
We will be adjourned and see you on September the 18th.